Good evening, everyone. I've called to order the regular meeting of the City Council of the City of East Ridge, April thirteenth, twenty twenty-three, six P M. I'd like to invite Daniel Beard to come forward with action church. He will provide an indication and leave us in our place to figure out a stand.
Thank you. For our friend, I'd like to apologize for my tired. I'll be taking my daughter to the softball game after work, sir. Father, we come to you. We ask God that your blessing be upon this meeting, this agenda set tonight, God. God, I pray, God, that you give the council, this mayor, the city manager, and everybody here in the room wisdom as we move forward to make East Ridge a better place, a better community, better for our trustees and business that invest here. God, we ask God that your blessing will continue to be upon our city, our state, those that work for the city, our police and fire, and God, and everybody that just calls this place home, including our students. We ask this in Jesus' name, amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir, and good luck. Roll call, Mr. Middleton.
Mayor Williams.
Here.
Vice Mayor Haines.
Here.
Councilmember Cagle.
Here.
Councilmember Tyler.
Here.
Councilmember Witt.
Here.
City Manager Miller.
Here.
City Attorney Litcher.
Here.
All right. First item on the agenda is Employee Milestone Awards. So we have two employees, two individuals that have reached a milestone. We appreciate our employees and what they do for our city. Without our dedicated employees, the city wouldn't be what it is today. So we want to congratulate Randy Albright for twenty years of service and David Burgess for five years. So we appreciate them. They will get a certificate, they will get a pin, and they will get a check as well in the next week or so. So thanks to them. The next item on the agenda is the Consent Agenda. That will be for the approval of the minutes for March twenty-third, twenty twenty-three council meeting, the approval of January twenty twenty-three financial report, the approval of February twenty twenty-three financial report, and the declaration of surplus property from the sanitation department and street department. Assume everyone has had an opportunity to review the consent agenda, and I will entertain a motion.
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second motion.
A motion to approve by Councilmember Witt and a second by Vice Mayor Haines. Do you have any discussion corrections?
I have one about the dumpsters. Are we going to replace those, or we just going to do a lay-in?
Mayor Williams, Council. What we're doing is the floors are falling out of the dumpsters, so they cannot be repaired because there's too much damage on them, so we need to replace them. So we're going to sell them and replace them.
Okay. Same thing about the zero turn motors.
That I cannot answer. I'm not straight for it.
Oh, the street department, okay. Mr. Miller, do you know?
Uh, let's see. This would be the fresh hog, zero turn, seventy-two deck. Yeah, that's not even working at this time. To be able to get the parts, it's hard here at Rosalie. So we're just, just surpassing it and selling what we can get from it.
Are we going to replace them? There's two of them.
Okay. We're going to replace one mower in the parks for the up, in the upcoming budget, not in the streets department.
Okay, so the street department is not going to be replaced, okay?
No, sir. It's not in the budget to be replaced.
All right. Anyone else? I see no roll call, Ms. Middleton.
Vice Mayor Haines.
Yes.
Councilmember Cagle.
Yes.
Councilmember Tyler.
Yes.
Councilmember Witt.
Yes.
Mayor Williams.
Yes. All right. We'll move to the next item, communication with citizens. This is an opportunity for a citizen or resident to come forward and address the council with any questions concerning chakalas. See if anyone wants to sign in. If you do, thank you, sir. Matt Hughes, eleven oh eight Greenslake Road. See if you'll come forward and, yes, sir.
Yeah, that's Matthew. They live away Greenslake Road, sits back in early seventies. Yeah, I discussed their streets a little bit, concerned state highways, city streets, and our city inspector, I guess. Y'all correct me where I'm wrong, because I don't know what I'm doing up here, but here we go.
Okay.
Okay. Like I said, I lived there since early seventies, and I was kind of watching, watching what y'all have, and uh, come to my attention on several little deals. And one of them is the tunnel, which I understand that is state highway through there?
Yes, sir.
Okay. That is the messiest thing on earth. If you have, and y'all do, you can't say it out loud enough, but if you have friends coming, it's got a nice car, or if you clean your car, it won't go downtown. You don't go through a tunnel, you go up, hit freeway, go up Germantown or something like that because of all that debris and mud and stuff, which could have easily been erected. Surely I know they do that, but I think city and the City of East Ridge attention of the inspectors, surely goes through something like that and okay's, you know, so okay, that's fine. But anyway, they could have been a little ditch like on the side, which I know you could get in a safety hazard pulling the car, or it could have been graded up through there and slow, you know, take care of the water, but it hadn't been touched in ages. So that's, that's one thing. And your own police department, I'm seeing up here, but talk to them, doesn't it? And when they wash their car, you don't go through the tunnel. Not if you were pretty white or nothing.
Okay.
Another thing, if they come in, you got people coming in or you're going out, you don't want to ridicule and invite them coming up McBrian Road that much, that toward interstate where the church cross churches and position to care. These are dips there that started after I moved in out there, where chumps coming up, y'all know what I'm talking about. And somebody come through a pass enough, hot rodder, can slam that stuff. Y'all may have had a case where somebody got a windshield knocked out or something, but it's just about all gone now, and it is rough as everything through there. That, that, really is ridiculous. It's not, I'm not saying the road's bad, I'm saying it's gone now just about. It's down to the old original surface almost, but it's very dangerous. And if you got somebody coming in from North Georgia for Oath or something, you don't want them to come up Scruggs Road, an area from Lord Speedway to Ringel Road. I know y'all been through there. And if you look, you'll see where trailers, you know, equipment, whatever, and corvettes, turn spoilers off. And you can see the road spexery stuff out there where all those dips and potholes and everything are, because it's scarred up bad from, that's damaged too. And you don't want to come up Max Smith Road, hold up, but you slow up. They repaved Max Smith all through there before the power companies, water companies off, just like a minefield where they dug all that up and put patches on there, just, I could beat that, and I don't know what I'm doing, but that is rough as everything from the Georgia line in. And just like on Scruggs Road, Georgia coming up and right where they cut off, it gets real rough on our end, same way on Max Smith. And uh, yes, then over on Greenslake, toward the cemetery, get toward Georgia line, where Greenslake, yeah, that's a residential area right there, it's, it's, that's bad. It's just been dipping and dipping and dipping. They put cool sale in, I don't know who does it, but you suppose, you know how a temp is? Wouldn't hurt temp, it would annoy making robbers. You can put that stuff down, a little ash ball wouldn't hurt, and wouldn't cost that much. Okay, here recently on John Ross Road, there was a water main or something busted up right there, red light, Greenslake, John Ross, and you seen where they put that patch? If you go across it.
No, not recently.
Between the patch and the red light, you got a big hole forming in there right now. I mean, it's getting, it's about four or five inches deep, big around this area right here. And it, as we speak, it's getting worse by a minute. That's going to bust on up. And I noticed also down toward John Ross, just where you get to Ringel Road, where those C V S is, there's a big hole there right now, it's about that big around about eight inches deep. I just think that's some other motorcycle. That could be, that could be pretty bad. Now, last but not least, Ringel Road, where they put all the new drainage and sidewalks and all that, they moved the barricades and turned it loose. In my way, I'm assuming they're through and y'all turned it over, which that's a state highway through there.
Yes, sir.
Is that going to be paved?
In time it will. Right now, they're only completed with the south side.
Right.
They're going to go to the north.
Which is an obstacle course.
They're going to go to the north side and go from McBrian all the way up to uh, shoot.
Weldon.
Just Weldon.
Yeah, the forest.
That one, yes. That probably will be completion by, I'm saying Thanksgiving time. And then hopefully we'll get to state in in two thousand twenty-four to resurface the road.
Yeah, that's T dot, that's, yes, it stayed on.
They're not going to be done with, they're not going to be, just being brutally honest, we did, we had a meeting this morning, progress meeting, monthly progress meeting this morning. We're not going to be completed with that. I'm not, I'm saying by Christmas time. The north side will, should be done by the end of twenty-three. So hopefully in twenty-four, we'll get on T dot's resurfacing program. Now, I will tell you about John Ross Road. That is on the state resurfacing program. We've got a grant for that. That should be in the next several months, they'll be resurfacing John Ross Road from Ringel Road south to City Limits. That one will be done.
How about uh, McBrian?
I'm trying to get the state to do that because that's, that, that's interstate actually connecting both Tennessee and Georgia. Right now, it's priority two.
McBrian Road?
Oh, McBrian Road. I'm sorry, I'm thinking about Max Smith Road.
So.
McBrian is, is in the, is on the.
It's up, so it's in the pipeline to get done.
Yeah, we're working on the resurface, I mean, the architects.
No, this area here, there's all nothing.
Are you talking?
There's been no holes, anything, Doug. It's just mother nature coming in.
Down by the interstate?
Down by terrace there in front of the.
You know where that intersection is?
Okay, my, we're going to resurface to right there where messes, where it's like that. And the state is going to do, from the bridges, because they're tearing the bridge down, so they're going to do, we're going to stop at where the church is.
Right.
And then the uh.
And also Chattanooga owns a portion of that, too.
Yeah, and then the state is supposed to.
I don't know if you do that or not, but we don't own all the way up to the terrace in that section of, Chattanooga owns a portion of that. But we are going to resurface that, and when they take the bridge down, they should be starting in the next uh.
Few months?
I think they're supposed to do, they do McBrian more first, I think it was.
They're doing more.
More first, but they'll be taking the bridge down, and then they'll resurface all that, and we'll tie into it.
Yeah. Okay, last, not to get any way.
No, you're fine.
Where a water company was, they went across our streets, and they put those patches or, you know, repaved or whatever. I know we got an inspector that says Tennessee Water Works repairs it. I know we got an inspector says, good job going outside. Some of these jobs that they're doing, I notice I was working for a ride years ago when they do, had to cross another hospital, that speed hunt you hit through there, third one, there where the little walkway here from the liquor store over to East Ridge Elementary, which I don't understand that, but there's two places there, one's real smooth, this floor, the other one, the people around there, I've heard several of them talking about wasting up, these guys with an empty trailer, utility trailer or something. That's why it makes noise when they're empty. And they're going through early, late, whatever, people trying to sleep, and they hit that hut. If you drive across, see what I'm talking about, and I live up on Greenslake, not here in the park, and they hit, boom, boom, like it. And a lot of places around, some of these places, they put that cool cell on, I think it just takes a shovel through there, a tacking little hill.
We have specifications that tell them if you've got to put in six to eight inches of rock and six to eight inches of potable fill, and then resurface it with a one, one and a half inch of wear and service. That's the specs, and we have the inspector in the street department who's out there and does that, expects that, he's supposed to get a permit to have that done.
Okay. As you go along, McBrian, I appreciate you helping out, you helping out, you helping out.
Thank you for bringing, that is definitely, as Scott knows, and I believe Mr. Al knows, that these street cuts are very top of my list because they're not completed incorrectly, and where there should be a lot, up to two years for repairs, any street cut that is being, that wasn't done correctly, or there is issues with it.
Right.
So we're trying to stay vigilant to address those and make the utility companies come back and repair those.
Absolutely.
So we need your input. If you see something we haven't noticed, please share those with us, if you've done.
Thank God for your time.
Just, just if I could just add something. This past year, we did a million dollars worth of resurfacing around the city in certain areas. We need to make the commitment, I believe this council has, that we've got to look at resurfacing a million dollars a year, because our roads, our residential roads are in poor shape. Now, when you talk about Scruggs Road, that road would probably take about half a million dollars to dig it all out and replace that, where I could be resurfacing residential roads within our.
Feeder roads, yes.
Our, our neighborhoods. Scruggs Road is a cut through for people back and forth from, from uh, Georgia into Tennessee and so forth. Doesn't serve any residential areas, so our emphasis has been on the residential roads predominantly, see what we can get the most, because a million dollars today doesn't get us a lot anymore.
That's one reason I came. The fact is, as we speak, that cost keeps going up.
It does.
The more we talk about it.
Unfortunately, we haven't had a resurfacing program in the past, so we're trying to address that. And to your point, we did go out and I believe we graded, we tried to do something to Scruggs Road, but it's continually having heavy trucks tearing it up. So we could probably go out and try to do some patching on it, but we're trying to focus our attention to neighborhoods and feeders into our neighborhoods.
Oh, yeah. I share your frustration. I call, ask Scott, I call him about every other week, about a road, I see all them road cuts on, just like you're talking about, John Ross, it's a, I mean, it's a patchwork.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I share your frustration, and I love it.
We all do. We appreciate it.
Thank God for your time.
Appreciate you very much, sir. All right. Mr. Hughes was the only one that signed in, but if there's anyone else in the audience that'd like to come forward, now's your opportunity. I see no one else, so we'll move to communication from councilmembers. Starting this up, Councilmember Tyler.
Uh, the East Ridge Optimist Club had their food drive, a very wet one, this past Saturday. It was a, a small success, the members all had a good time, and uh, we were able to raise some money and a couple boxes of food, but I think we'll be probably do that again sometime in the future. It was a, it was a big success.
Yeah. Thanks to Southern Honda.
And thanks to Southern Honda, who allowed, allowed us to host.
Yes.
Uh, um, and they were very gracious with their, their property there, they provided us in a few times, so, but yeah, thanks again.
Councilmember Witt.
Nothing at this time.
Councilmember Green.
I don't have anything at this time.
Councilmember Pfeil.
That's right, I don't have anything now, do I?
All right. Well, you know, they always have a lot to say. A few pages today. I'll try to make it quick. First, please keep the Card family in your thoughts and your prayers. Tom Card, former East Ridge council member and vice mayor, he passed away on Monday. Mr. Card, he served with the city as an elected official for eight years, and he actually then designed our, the flag that was selected for our city. So his family is going to be received Monday, the seventeenth, from four to eight, at South Crest Chapel, and funeral service will be Tuesday, the eighteenth, at twelve thirty. So keep the Card family in your thoughts and prayers, please. East Ridge Library, you can vote on your favorite People's Choice Pete dot llama through Saturday, April the fifteenth. You go on Face, you go Facebook online, and if you like the pictures, there's about twelve of them, they're cute, I've seen them. You can like equals a vote, or you can actually come to the library, check them out in person. Also, that's the fifteenth, so also through the fifteenth, Saturday, the fifteenth, from eleven to twelve, is the, is the Novel Idea Book Club for adults. So stop by and join the library, monthly book club, if you'd like to have a great event to attend monthly. Then Saturday, April the twenty-ninth, from eleven to one, will be our fiftieth anniversary of our library. So come join them, celebrating fifty years of service to the East Ridge community. There'll be carnival type events, petting zoo, hot dogs, snow cones, games, face paintings, free event, and no registration is required. Now, our great, uh, East Street Parks and Rec. Z one scene, the, the planters, the stuff they put out there around the playground and the area over there. So the community center staff volunteers prepared raised beds for the community garden coming this summer. Community volunteers are encouraged to contact the community center for more information. The garden will produce and be open to the public for harvest. People can come sign up sheets to, to help to attract the harvest when you collect things. You can reach Hannah Spear at the community center at four two three four eight six two zero three four eight spear at eastridgetendup if you want to help. That's a great, great thing going on. Also, self-defense class is being offered Saturday, April fifteenth, ten to two, at the East Ridge Community Center, so if anybody's interested in attending that. We have another great event coming on this weekend at Camp Jordan, Buggin Palooza, if you've been to that. If you haven't, you need to go. That's going to be from eight to five on Saturday, the fifteenth, and eight to three, Sunday, the sixteenth. They're, they're hosting the premier VW festival. All proceeds will be benefit of the Ronald McDonald House, charities, and the Greater Chattanooga, and it's five dollar per person, children are twelve for free. Then another event going on this weekend at the arena, Masters Gardener, Gardeners of Hamlin County Association University of Tennessee Extension is presenting Master Your Garden Expo. Looks like a great event. It's going to be Saturday, the fifteenth, ten to six, and Sunday, the sixteenth, from ten to four, at the arena. Ten dollar mission for both days, children are twelve for free. Proceeds will, from the expo benefits, the Master Gardeners of Hamlin County Scholarships and Community Garden Programs. Then, April the twenty-second, Kid Fest, family event and expo from ten to six, hosted by Magic Lamp Entertainment LLC. The event benefits the Shore Hospital, Air Linger. There'll be fun activities for the kids, there'll be characters, meet and greets, magic illusion show, animal encounters, a long list of things. We have dunking tank, face painting, firefighters, I believe, and police officers will be there for meet and greets. So there'll be food vendors and concessions, unfortunately, that's not included in the mission, but be a great, great event. We have a lot of events going on in our, at our great park. Kids Pro, Saturday, the twenty-ninth, is a Kids Pro Football Clinic, celebrating thirteen years here in the area. They'll be playing football and teaching athletes more than the kids, and coordinating and life sessions and building characters. They'll be teaching sportsmanship, integrity, excellence, and teamwork. So it's a great event for kids thirteen, seven to thirteen. They'll also have an ability to meet NFL pros and former local NFL and college standouts, and the mission is free. Red Wolves, Saturday, the twenty-ninth, will be uh, East Ridge Parks and Rec night. So they also can go to the Parks and Rec website or to their Facebook page, and you can then purchase your tickets, and then it'll be, proceeds will go to actually the, the park in Parks and Rec, back to the, the teams in the park. So you go out on the website, choose the team that you're supporting, and they will benefit from that. Thank you. Nope. Got another page. I'll make it quick. If you're like me, you're going to enjoy this one. Bacon Festival, March, May the sixth to the seventh, Camp Jordan, from ten A M. to five, and Sunday, ten to four. There'll be a hundred and fifty vendors, food trucks, inflatables, petting zoo, pony rides, and it's all for free. And lastly, Thrillville. If you made it to Thrillville last year, you, I'm sure you had a great time. If you didn't, you should go. They will combos kind of take over the park. It's a great, great amusement, rides, they have shows, different things. It'll be the, May the eleventh through the twenty-first, and Monday through Friday hours is five to ten, Saturday and Sunday is one to eleven. I think that's it. I'll catch my breath and get a drink of water and hand it off to, to the manager.
Thank you, Mayor. I did a couple items. Give you an update on Ringel Road. The work on the south side is nearing completion. Still a couple tasks need to be completed between Congress and McBrian, the south side, specifically driveways being resurfaced, and the restoration work on the edge of the sidewalks to the back of the properties need to be cleaned up, and then installing of the traffic loops on the more of McBrian Road. So we're looking to have that completed within the next several weeks. Did you notice that Tally started to move over to the north side today at Dover Lane, heading west on Ringel Road to Weldon? They'll be closing the outside lane, they'll be doing demolition and storm drainage work during that period of time. And concurrently, Chattanooga Gas is up there at Weldon to Cemetery. They'll be there with, completed with that within the next three to four weeks, and then they'll come start proceeding east. And in the middle, Tally and Chattanooga Gas will meet probably somewhere around the Bellmore area. The north side is anticipated to take probably a good, what, six to seven months, as I mentioned to the gentleman under Citizen comments. We're not scheduled for this project to be completed until November. Pending weather, we keep the weather good and favorable, we can get done a lot quicker. But we are running into various conflicts out there with utilities, specifically storm lines, water lines, and gas lines. So we've got to, whenever we run into a conflict, we've got to mitigate that the best we can and continue onward. Second item, I just wanted to touch base on the animal shelter facility. We're moving forward with that project. We've got the floor plan pretty well established, we've got the elevations pretty well established. I think you've all seen some copies of that information. Right now, we're working with the engineering for site prep and site plan, so we can know exactly where the placement of that building is going to be. It's more, more over towards Stone Street and uh, the south part of that, where the water area is located, we're not going to approach into that area, but we'll have enough room for parking and enough room for dog runs. So we're moving along on this one. Don't be surprised if we, you're ready for a meeting, a community meeting on this, coming up either later in April or the beginning of May, because we're, we're moving forward on this. Plans are to get this in a position to bid it out and start construction, target date, August twenty-three, finish date, target, August twenty-four. That's all I have.
Thank you, sir. All right. As we move down the agenda, we do not have any old business, so we'll move into the next item, is new business. And I'm gonna, council, I'm going to adjust the agenda slightly. I'm going to move item H up to the front. We have several, several people here in regards for that. So I'm going to move item H forward, get to the top. Resolution number three three eight two.
A resolution of the city, a resolution of the East Ridge City Council, making certain findings relating to textile printing company project, to delegate certain authority to conduct a development for the City of East Ridge, and authorize the mayor to enter into an executive agreement for payment in lieu of ad form taxes.
Thank you, sir. I would like to.
Okay, I can go, Mayor.
Start, and then I'll ask Mr. Hyde if he'll come forward as well.
Mayor, council, I think we have representatives from the company here that can add some information to, but this, this is a development that is on Ringel Road, that sixty-one oh seven Ringel Road, I think some of the coin, the old church property, I think, I've heard kind of coin. It's a vacant, essentially a vacant piece of property. It came on the tax rolls back in two thousand and seven, I think, and um, but it's basically one, it's fairly unrooted property for the most part, so the tax basis on that property is relatively low. The, um, TPC has come and made a representation and a request for a payment in lieu of taxes. And this is a economic development, uh, program offered by the state of Tennessee, it's one of two on a kind of a tax basis. This is not a border region project, this would be one that relates to ad form property taxes. And what the, is being presented here is a development that's gonna infuse around twenty-one million dollar, uh, investment into this vacant property. The owner is requesting, uh, that this property undergo the pilot program, which would involve the property being transferred over to the city's IDB. And under, excuse me, under the state statute that allows for pilot programs, the IDB would own it and rent back the property to the owner, and who would make lease payments, uh, pursuant to an agreement, on a pilot agreement as well as to a lease agreement. All of this would be monitored through not just the, the city, but also through the Chamber of Commerce, as well as the Tennessee Board of Equalization. And so, this is a program that is not just a handout, it's, this is not an appropriation of funds, this is the one that is done through a monitored checks and balance program, and it has callback provisions. What is being proposed here is a five-year agreement whereby the property will be owned by, uh, the East Ridge Industrial Development Board, and for a period of five years, the owners would essentially lease it back and make payments. Uh, you should have a tax schedule that you can provide it. And essentially, based upon the projections, uh, with a twenty-one million dollar investment, this property, the taxes are estimated to increase, uh, or at least go up to around three hundred and thirty thousand, give or take, I mean, excuse me, three hundred and eighty thousand dollars in, uh, property taxes over that five-year period. The, it's a phased five-year period of what the, uh, I'd say the developer owner would be paying back, and ultimately for the city, uh, it would be agreeing to essentially, uh, an abatement of taxes, and it would be around two hundred and fifty, two hundred and sixty thousand dollars over that five-year period. The, the, the exchange that the developers was offering is that, one, it's a twenty-one million dollar investment. After the five-year period, this property that currently is unapproved would go fully back to the tax rolls, and forever thereafter, they taxed at the hundred percent, uh, rate, and that's what it would be paying. But also, uh, the offering from the developers, that there would be approximately, I wanna say, uh, ninety, ninety jobs, I think you ever ta- ninety jobs, uh, full-time jobs with a salary average of forty-eight thousand eight hundred, which does not include benefits. This is the, um, the TPC, maybe all we know, is the oldest manufacturer, I think, with about fifty-plus years with the city. And, and in fact, talking with representatives of the company, a large base of their employment is East Ridge residents. And so, um, in fact, they have explored options for satellite locations for what they want to do, but given the fact that their employees are highly populated from the City of East Ridge, for them, it made sense to stay in the city for this satellite, what we call satellite development, um, that's under this pilot program. So, you've got, it's, uh, you can see that, uh, the funds here, this is not something just the city is agreeing to, this is something that the county has already considered, at least in their agenda session, it's my understanding, they have, uh, demonstrated positive, uh, encouragement for this, and appear to be, uh, a matter that the county also will participate in. And so, it's not just the city taking this on. One, one thing to know is that the city, uh, excuse me, the school fund will not be encroached on, and so, they will still be paying a portion of the school fund for this five-year period. And of course, Hamlin County operates the school system, uh, that, for the schools that are here in East Ridge. So, again, there are callback provisions in here, the, the representatives can come and get details if you have any questions about that. But that's, that's really the program that's being offered here for you all. There would be an agreement that this body would approve pursuant to this resolution, the lease agreement would be entered into force between the IDB and the property owners. Any questions? Or do you have representatives here as well?
Yeah, I would like to say that, um, I'm, I'm very excited for this amazing expansion. As you mentioned, Mr. Litchard, uh, TPC has been existing for ninety-nine years. They'll reach their hundred-year mark in celebration next year in April. Fifty-four of those years were here in the City of East Ridge, and it's an amazing expansion, twenty-one million, as you mentioned, sixty thousand square foot, 'cause they exist in one hundred and fifty thousand square foot. And high, high quality paying jobs, ninety of those. I'd like to thank this Mr. Howard family for their long-term involvement and commitment in East Ridge. We're very excited for the future of TPC. I'd like to thank Steve Hyde for, you know, working, uh, with Chamber Commerce, Chinese Chamber Commerce, and his efforts and work toward this proposal that we've been presented. Scott and I attended the, um, county commission, um, yesterday, um, and they reviewed this and discussed in their agenda session. Uh, they are planning to vote on this next Wednesday, and, uh, with, uh, positive votes from them and us, we will then present it to our IDB for approval and execution. So, um, if y'all would come forward, or we can see if there's questions, but we definitely appreciate y'all. So, I will entertain a motion for resolution number three three eight two.
I'll make the motion to approve resolution number three three eight two.
Second.
We have a motion to approve by, by Mayor Haynes, and a second by Councilmember Tyler, do we have any questions? Did, did y'all want to come forward and say anything, you're more than welcome?
Well, you guys covered it very, very well. I'll let Kirk say a few words.
We'd love to.
And I, I'll be here to answer any questions that y'all may have about the-
Mayor, um, and each of the council members, I just wanna tell you how excited we are. I was telling Steve as we came in here, I said, you know, we walked into that building when it was a bowling alley in nineteen sixty-seven, and I purchased it, and my father and my grandfather were, uh, very, um, I don't know if I would say they were scared, but they were apprehensive about how we ever filled that building. And, uh, we've been very blessed to, you know, to, and I don't think we'd have done the same thing that we've done in the business had it not been to be in this community. And, and what's gone on in this community in the last several years, with the poor city, and what you've done around, and just the whole cleanliness and the way you've conducted business, I'm real proud that we're able to, to be here, and I appreciate, you know, the opportunity, uh, that you've, you know, shown confidence and us to carry on. And, uh, we've got fourth generation family in the business. It's, uh, you know, we've got a lot of plans, uh, we hope that the building, uh, is gonna be something that is a, is a true upgrade on Ringel Road. You know, from what we've got, we've got a lot of work to do. Uh, it's a hard, hard business to, you know, to go out and, and learn how to build a building, and I've just kinda muddled along and noticed people have been there to help us, and Steve, and the whole team here has, and I just wanna thank you, and, uh, we've, we've got great plans and aspirations for things to come, and, uh, we're just very happy to be here.
Thank you. Yes.
I, I would just like to say thank you for investing in East Ridge. I've toured the facility, if, if any of the members, if not-
Oh, I would love to have it.
You should, you should tour, it's amazing, all the companies that they do business with, you'll be quite impressed, and thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Ruth.
I had the opportunity to tour in my last job, I was with the Department of the Labor and Workforce Development. So, it's one of the cleanest places I've ever been in.
It is, it's very clean.
Thank you very much. Like I said, it's a, it's a, it takes a village, you know, I really feel we're, you know, a lot of, you know, we're, we're, we're a great team here, you know, I, I love the city of East Ridge.
I, I once heard that, uh, you're the largest employer in East Ridge, is that true?
I, I've heard that too, and I'm not sure where that, you know, I, I don't have the records to prove that, but I understand that, you know-
Might have ninety jobs will get you there.
Well, yeah, I think it's, uh, you know, I think we're, you know, we're cruising towards two fifty right now, so it's a lot, it's gonna be a, um, it's gonna be a fun ride, that's for sure.
I'm very excited.
You are excited, thank you so much.
Do you have any questions, council? I see none, roll call, Ms. Miller.
Vice Mayor Haynes?
Yes.
Councilmember Cagle?
Yes.
Councilmember Tyler?
Yes.
Councilmember Witt?
Yes.
Mayor Williams?
Yes. Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you, appreciate it, very much.
Awesome, awesome. All right, now we'll go back to regular order of business, which will be on line, public hearing ordinance number eleven eighty-four.
Mayor and council, we'll read the ordinance, uh, this is for the public hearing, but we'll read the ordinance, and then again, we'll read the ordinance, town file and public hearing. So, this is a public hearing for ordinance number eleven eighty-four, an ordinance, the City Council, the City of East Ridge, Tennessee, to amend the zoning regulations and the zoning map of the City of East Ridge, Tennessee. So, as to rezone the property located at one five zero five Crater Road, tax map number one six nine K dash N dash zero zero five point zero one, from C two commercial district and R one residential district to R Z dash one zero lot line residential district.
Thank you, sir. Tyler, can you give us a little background, and then I'll open up the public hearing.
Good evening, Mayor and council. So, as Litchard described, that is a C two and a R one split zone parcel. Uh, what the applicant's seeking to do is, uh, rezone it to R Z one, which would be zero path, zero lot line patio homes, then subdividing the property, which would make each parcel around eight thousand square feet, which is primarily the, the, the size of the adjacent lots in that area, being that they were, you know, lots of record back in the twenties, I think they were developed, uh, they'd put those at, at around, the existing was nine thousand square feet, and the new one's around eight thousand square feet. And Mr. Cagle asked one question, I think during the last, uh, council meeting, about the power and communication easement on that property. So, there is a fifteen-foot easement in front of that property, uh, the zoning code requires a twenty-five-foot setback off the pro- off the, uh, road, running that is, so they would be clearing that easement by ten feet.
The question was, was that underground thing they got out there for the power board or telephones, or whatever it is up there, as you're going up in the last corner lot on the right?
I was never able to find any information on that, Jack.
So, is it gonna take away from the square footage, 'cause somebody's got to have some kind of right of way for that thing being there, and the way it's shown here on this is part of it?
That would be the case, you would think there would be an easement on that, plat's not showing that, deed's not showing that. It's only showing a fifteen-foot communication easement in the front, on the front of property. That's it.
Do you know the thing I'm talking about?
Yes, sir, I do.
All right, I will open up this public hearing. If there's anyone in the, um, the audience that would like to come forward in favor of or in opposition, now is your opportunity to come to speak at this public hearing, ordinance number eleven eighty-four. I see none. We'll close this public hearing, and we'll move into the ordinance number specifically eleven eighty-four.
Ordinance number eleven eighty-four, an ordinance, the City Council, the City of East Ridge, Tennessee, to amend zoning regulations and the zoning map, City of East Ridge, Tennessee. So, as to rezone the property located at one five zero five Crater Road, tax map number one six nine K dash N dash zero zero five point zero one, from C two commercial district and R one residential district to R Z one zero lot line residential district.
Thank you, sir, this will be the first reading for this ordinance, as, um, Mr. Howe has conveyed the applicant's request. So, I will entertain a motion for ordinance number eleven eighty-four.
I make a motion, write down eleven eighty-four that we tabled, till we find out about how much right of way that thing has got, see how much that's gonna cut down on the size of the lots.
All right, I have a motion to forward a table without a second. Do we have a second? We haven't received a second, so that motion dies without a second. I'm gonna entertain another motion for ordinance, ordinance number eleven eighty-four.
I make a motion to approve ordinance number eleven eighty-four.
I'll second that.
Have a motion to approve by Councilmember Witt, and a second by Councilmember Tyler, do we have any discussion? I see none, roll call, Ms. Miller.
Vice Mayor Haynes?
Yes.
Councilmember Cagle?
No.
Councilmember Tyler?
Yes.
Councilmember Witt?
Yes.
Mayor Williams?
Yes. Ordinance number eleven eighty-four passed first reading, they will be followed up with a second reading of the next council meeting.
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Thank you, sir. We'll move to item C, resolution number three three seven seven.
A resolution of the City Council, the City of East Ridge, Tennessee, approving the appointment by Mayor Williams to the East Ridge Board of Zoning Appeals.
Thank you, sir. Um, I would like to, uh, reappoint, um, Steve Leach, uh, to the Board of Zoning Appeals. I saw that interlaced as a, a motion.
I make a question, I make a question to approve resolution number three three seven seven.
Okay.
Second.
All right, um, we've got a motion to approve by, by Vice Mayor Haynes, and a second by Councilmember Cagle. Uh, do we have any discussion? See none, roll call, Ms. Miller.
Vice Mayor Haynes?
Yes.
Councilmember Cagle?
Yes.
Councilmember Tyler?
Yes.
Councilmember Witt?
Yes.
Mayor Williams?
Yes. Thank you. We will move to item D, res- resolution number three three seven eight.
A resolution of the City Council, the City of East Ridge, Tennessee, authorizing the purchase of a Pierce rescue engine from E V S, Emergency Vehicle Specialist, G M W Diesel Service for the Houston Galveston Area Council water purchasing program.
Two moves.
Mayor and council members, uh, myself and Mr. Miller have been discussing, uh, our apparatus that we currently have, and looking at dates on, um, if we were to purchase things in the next several years, how long the lead times would be, and different costs, and, and things of this matter. Since the last time we ordered an engine, uh, just over, uh, a year ago, um, the cost has increased, uh, some, somewhat near almost a hundred thousand dollars for a fire truck. So, what we wanted to do is go ahead and start looking at some things. We know that we're gonna need another engine, um, looking right at two years down the road, so we wanted to go ahead and start, uh, researching it, and see what is gonna be the best fit for East Ridge, is there gonna be money savings, is there gonna be, uh, uh, something that we could go ahead and order now, uh, at the present time, and in those two years it'll be here. So, what we've come up with is if we order a new engine, just like we ordered last year, um, it would be twenty-five to twenty-seven monthly time, okay, so it'd take over two years. If we wait till July of this year and order it, we're looking at thirty-eight to forty-one month lead time, so it increases. If ordered in April with a fifty percent prepayment discount, we would save the city eighteen thousand seven hundred and seventy-nine dollars. If we wait and, uh, order it in, uh, in July, we're, we're gonna lose that eighteen thousand, um, after the budget was passed. So, we, we, we tried to put some numbers on paper, and try to look at some, some ideas, and, and, and this is kind of what we've come up with. We do the fifty percent prepayment discount in April currently, we'll pay about four hundred and twenty thousand, four hundred and thirty-one fifty, and we're purchasing through the same company that we purchased through last time with the last engine. Uh, of course, the next step is where would the money come from? So, myself and Mr. Miller and Ms. Quills discuss this, and it will come out with a fund balance. Um, this is completely left up to the council to make that decision, of course. Um, but I do want the council to understand that with the age of our fleet, the needs of our city, uh, of course, the growing unit and everything that we've got going on, this is definitely something that we're, we're trying to research, and, and we feel like at the current time, this is what's best for the city. So, that's, that's where we stand at right now.
Thank you, sir. I'll entertain a motion for resolution number three three seven eight. Thank you, sir. I'll entertain a motion for resolution number three three seven eight.
I make a motion to approve resolution three three seven eight.
Second.
Have a motion to approve by councilmember Witt and a second by councilmember Tyler. Do we have any discussion?
So would this be a new, a new truck, like a brand new?
It will be a brand new engine. It will be just like the engine that we just ordered. That's another kind of cutting corners, if you would, the saving on our lead time. The engine that we ordered should be in toward the end of June or June, the first of July of this year, okay? We took that same exact engine, and that would be exactly what we would work against, okay? Of course, there may be a few little modifications on it, little stuff that is nothing major. We know, we won't know what we're getting, so I wouldn't make some small adjustments, looking at no cost currently. If there is cost to the city for additional things like rescue tools or equipment, because some of the equipment's outdated by the time two years rolls around, then we'll have to discuss that with council in the future, possibly coming from cap person or such.
Any other questions? What I have, this is to replace the two thousand and five engine?
We had, yes, sir, and that's another thing I did want to discuss. I did put in here this to replace the two thousand and five H M A rescue hamper. There are a couple of options that me and Mr. Miller discussed about that. We've got another truck that is a support truck that's got over three hundred thousand miles on it. So what we did is one of the options would be taking the stuff that goes on that support truck, taking this rescue engine, the two thousand and five, making it a rehab, air rehab, and we can also use it as a dual purpose truck, as an engine as well.
So I was wondering if we couldn't be able to utilize it or if we would?
Yes, we would.
Awesome.
And then we're gonna get rid of the two thousand and fourteen Ford van, which we use now currently for the air rehab vehicle, which has over three hundred and forty thousand miles on it. So we're gonna replace that one entirely, that one goes, and we'll reuse this one.
Awesome. Okay, any other questions, counsel? All right, roll call, Ms. Milton.
Vice Mayor Hanes?
Yes.
Councilmember Cagle?
Yes.
Councilmember Tyler?
Yes.
Councilmember Witt?
Yes.
Mayor Williams?
Yes. Resolution number three three seven eight approved. We'll move to item E, resolution number three three seven nine.
A resolution of the city council, the city of East Ridge, Tennessee, authorizing the purchase of a field sanitation truck from Stringfellow Truck Sales to the Sourcewell Purchasing Alliance. Is that right, Mayor and council?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
And what it is, is we're gonna replace truck number twenty-seven. We've been having a lot of issues with two of our trucks, which one of them we're gonna hold on to because of the reason that we just went and replaced the press in it. It cost us over sixteen thousand dollars. So twenty-seven is now in the process of needing to be replaced, along with having rear ends go out now. So they're not, at the time that they were bought, there was some states that happened. I don't know what they were or anything about it, but I do know that they were under spec for the amount of tonnage that was to be hauled with these two trucks. They are only supposed to haul up to two ton, that's it. And they're just not, you know, capable of hauling any more than that, but we have been putting it on there because we need the trucks. So that's why we're wanting to replace twenty-seven, get rid of it, and go through Stringfellow. And also, Stringfellow, we could put fifty percent down on their truck and hold the two hundred and eighty thousand dollars right now. But later on, that may not happen like that, because they said the prices are continuing to increase on the purchase of a truck, which could be three hundred thousand.
Too much situation with a bumper. We could save up to twenty thousand purchasing it in April and waiting.
Yes.
Yes.
All right, thank you, sir. Counsel, I entertain a motion for resolution number three three seven nine.
I make a motion to approve resolution number three three seven nine.
Second.
Have a motion to approve by councilmember Tyler and a second by councilmember Witt. Do we have any discussion? I see none. Roll call, Ms. Milton.
Vice Mayor Hanes?
Yes.
Councilmember Cagle?
Yes.
Councilmember Tyler?
Yes.
Councilmember Witt?
Yes.
Mayor Williams?
Yes. Resolution number three three seven eight passed. We'll move to item F, resolution number three three eight zero.
A resolution of the city council, the city of East Ridge, Tennessee, amending resolution number three two four one, which approved human resources and medical.
Mayor and council, as we talked about when we passed the H R P manual last year, just over a year ago, there would need to be updates from time to time as we work in the document, and as the city evolves, we have to update and be fluid to the extent that we've gone back to any changes. So that's what we're bringing before you today. I'm just here to answer any questions you have about any of those changes.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay.
Let me get a motion forward. So I'll entertain a motion for resolution number three three eight zero.
I make a motion to approve resolution number three three eight zero.
Second.
Thank you, sir. Any questions?
Yes, sir. All right, I'm reading here immediate family.
Okay.
Okay, says spouse, parent, children, children taken into the home to raise. And we're changing it back here to immediate family, and we've as parent considering father-in-law's, mother-in-law's as parents.
You're asking if we're considering in-laws as parents?
Say my, say my mother-in-law's parents died. Are y'all considering that my parent?
As far as I'm concerned, yes, it really falls to the supervisor of the department and then ultimately to the city manager if there's any question about it. So we don't wanna get too specific as to every single extension of the family.
All right, now read over here in another place where you are eliminating stepchildren that has been married into the families, or a husband and wife that went out, and both got kids, so one of them becomes employees' stepkids. So are they eliminated? They're not considered as immediate family?
I don't believe they were, well, here's how I'm gonna explain that. So in the old policy, part of the reason why we looked at changing it is really, really poorly written, in that that entire paragraph is a giant one-on-sentence. It starts with an open parentheses, which is supposed to be used in exception two, and we can't really tell as you go along, their spouse, parent, stepchildren, stepchildren for children, stepchildren, legally adopted children, children taken into the home to raise under a properly executed order, and those blood relatives of the employee that are verifiably living in the home and dependent upon the employee for care. And then it goes on to a further list that nobody really understands if that's referencing, if they live in the employee's home and are dependent on the employee for care, or if that is further in the original list of what qualifies as immediate. So that's why we kind of rewrote it. It's extremely hard to understand. I've had yeah, I had people looking at it and saying, what does it mean to you? And no person came up with the same exact translation of that. So that's why we broke it out, and like I said, instead of listing every possible variation of who might be involved and considered in your family, we left it open to the discretion of the city manager if there's ever a question on who applies to that, because there's no possible way to define every contingency that might occur or specific circumstances to any given family. There's just no way. There's too many variations to that at this point.
Any other clarifying questions or any other questions?
Then why can't we go ahead and put in the new bereavement policy, mother-in-law, father-in-law, stepkids that live within the household?
We can. You know, for I, I'm a stepmother. I have a stepson. I don't call him stepchildren. I call him my child. He doesn't live with me anymore, but I would like to think that he is still a child. He is my husband's child, and therefore, if he were to pass away, that I would receive bereavement for that. But we can list them out in detail. I'm happy to do that, if that's what the council would like to see, like you said.
Maybe that would make it more clearer, you know, because I know these people get tired of hearing me say, this happened back when I was an employee. The employee's mother-in-law died. They denied him bereavement for his mother-in-law. Then about six months later, then they come back and had second thoughts, because mother-in-law and father-in-law wasn't in the thing. So then they went ahead and paid him. So put it in there black and white, then it can't be argued. Same thing on the stepchildren, you know, as long as they're living in the house.
Yeah, I, the word blood relatives
I know.
makes it, it seems exclusionary.
I think removing the word blood relative, because there's so many blended families now.
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
And even an adult stepchild, you could be very close. I just think it can be removed, that blood relative.
So, Councilman Cagle, you're asking for mother-in-law, father-in-law, and, is there?
And steps.
Stepchildren.
Stepchildren to be added.
Yes, sir, that's living in the household.
Right, right.
And take out blood relative and steps.
We can do, we can do that, right?
Of course.
If that's what the council wants to do, I mean, I don't see any problem with that. What's your?
I mean, relatives is fine, but I just think the word blood relative is just too exclusionary
Okay.
for a policy that encompasses a diverse family makeup of our city employees. I think, you know, they probably got adopted children, stepchildren.
Oh, I'm sure. More and more today. So we're gonna take out the blood, and we're gonna add in the mother-in-law, father-in-law, and stepchildren.
I have another issue. What about foster kids? A lot of, do we not, my friends, have foster kids? Children taken into the home to raise under a properly executed order?
Yeah, that's, that's a group.
Okay.
That's what I couldn't understand. That's in there, stepchildren or not, that are living with them, so.
Trying to get all the clues in.
Okay. Any other questions?
So I guess the question I have is, we've got a motion and a second to approve. Do we want to amend it, or do we?
Yeah, I was about to move to amend it, so.
Yeah.
A motion to amend with the exception of agreement leave section to remove term blood relative.
Let's get a motion to amend. To amend.
And add?
And add in stepkid, or stepchildren, mother-in-law and father-in-law.
Yep.
I make a motion to amend the resolution so that we can add stepmother, step, I mean, mother-in-law, father-in-law, stepchildren, and remove the word blood from the thing. And so I make a motion that we approve the resolution as read with these changes.
I second that motion.
All right, we got a motion to amend, and I'm gonna ask Ms. Milton, do you have the specific to the amend?
Yes.
Okay, awesome. So we've got a motion to approve by councilmember Cagle, and we have that second by Vice Mayor Hanes. Do we have any questions on the amendment? I see none. Roll call for the amendment.
Vice Mayor Hanes?
Yes.
Councilmember Cagle?
Yes.
Councilmember Tyler?
Yes.
Councilmember Witt?
Yes.
Mayor Williams?
Yes. Now we have the original motion and the second of the resolution
As amended.
as amended. Do we have any discussion on here? Any further discussion? I see none. Roll call, Ms. Milton.
Vice Mayor Hanes?
Yes.
Councilmember Cagle?
Yes.
Councilmember Tyler?
Yes.
Councilmember Witt?
Yes.
Mayor Williams?
Yes. Resolution three three zero as amended, approved.
Got it.
So we will give a copy of that back?
Yes, sir.
Okay, through review. All right. We'll move now to item G, resolution number three three eight one.
A resolution of the city council, the city of East Ridge, Tennessee, authorizing the city manager or his designated renew the firewall protection with Lightfoot Technology LLC, the city's computer network, as part of the original contract awarded on block fourteen, two thousand and two.
Ms. Milton?
Hello again. This quote covers all of the actual firewalls themselves, physical firewalls, as well as the twenty-seven, twenty-four seven customer support for the city, providing the critical layer of protection for the city's digital information.
I will entertain a motion for resolution number three three eight one.
I make a motion to approve resolution number three three eight one.
Second.
Have a motion to approve by councilmember Witt and a second by councilmember Tyler. Do we have any discussion? I do. So I definitely in support of firewall protection. What type of remediation or guarantee do they have in the event we are hacked, or yet have a disaster?
That's a great question. You want a great answer. We don't.
That's not a great answer.
I know, right? That protection lies with our risk managers, and there is protection out there. I actually spoke with Ms. Pauls about it earlier today. I just, as most of you know, drove in from Sevierville where I was in a conference with my peers, and this item came up, because if you're watching, it's College Hill was hacked last week. Two weeks prior, March twenty-third, the city of Oak Ridge was hacked, and this just in last night, the city of Rocky Top was hacked. So it is out there. It's happening. It's happening way faster than anybody is comfortable with, and this does not provide us any guarantees. There is nothing we can do to guarantee. We can purchase protection through a risk management company that would basically cover the cost of paying the ransom on our data if it was hacked. And that is something I have not looked into, we have to talk about.
Yes, I have been discussing it with Judy and with members of the public risk manager. We have a cybersecurity, and you can get a more detailed, more increased one. We will have to have more training and more things here, but we are discussing it with public entity departments, so we're working on it.
So this is the IT guide for forty years coming out. I guess we need a plan.
Yes, we need a written plan.
We need an assessment, because we need to make sure we have backups. We need to make sure we have a redundant system, because I don't wanna be held ransom.
We do. We have backups that are done here. We have backups that are done offsite.
We need redundant systems that we can utilize from the backups, too.
Yes, we do.
Okay.
We have, we are backing up in different places, and we have plans.
Awesome.
Well, I hear.
The key is to find out what that number's going to be to pay for the ransom. That we need to investigate.
Yes. College Hill will be a very useful resource for us, because like I said, they're just going through it right now. And they're similar in size. Also, Oak Ridge is thirty-one thousand people, so it's roughly the same size city as well, just a little larger. And it's happened to them so recently. They've each addressed it in different ways thus far. So I feel more confident, knowing unfortunately that they tested our shores and can discuss.
Wondering from your experiences.
Yes, absolutely. In fact, College Hill has many of their systems aligned with ours, as far as their networks, so.
And I believe they're, aren't they not with Lightfoot?
They are with Lightfoot. I don't know if there are firewalls we can fortify that though.
That's true.
So that I have to.
Don't know that.
Yeah. I know. Fortify that's already provided our firewalls, so this is a renewal for us.
Do we know what kind of backup system they get, or did they have one?
We don't. Again, their backups would be done by Lightfoot, just as ours are. They do have a different rep that they work with, his name is Eric Harrison-Roberts. So that's something, like I said, literally, I'm finding all this out this morning, just about like Rocky Top getting hit last night. That's not even in news.
So the nature of these other hacks, were these brute force attacks from the outside, or were they passwords fished from the inside through emails?
From what we know at this point, they are. From what we know at this point, they are from outside, they are hacked, they are not.
So it wasn't like a, uh, security breach, an accidental security breach or?
Correct. Um, the information is on the dark web, so, um, they, this, it's a, they actually know the name of the hacking group. Um, and then they, uh, let the city know that we've stolen your information, we've copied it. It's on the dark web, here's proof, they send a link, they show them a little bit of the information, they recognize it, um, because they're the city's information, and then they say, um, here's what you have to pay us or we release it. Um, and eventually if they stall or don't release in time, then they start locking down their systems, and that's what College Hill's been doing.
Okay, thank you for that.
So I, I'm gonna say. You will not be getting an email from me asking for you to go get any type of credit card or do any kind of favor, which I know several of y'all get, you've got.
I got one, I did too.
So with that being said, I think it is a great idea, and my company does this, that we have some training sessions with, for every employee that has internet and email connectivity and walkthrough scenarios and what to look for and how to prevent them taking a link or replying to the email that will get us in this situation.
Absolutely. We'll be working on this a lot.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions? All right, we have a motion, we have a second. Roll call Ms. Milton.
Vice Mayor Hanes.
Yes.
Councilmember Cagle.
Yes.
Councilmember Tyler.
Yes.
Councilmember Witt.
Yes.
Mayor Williams.
Yes. Resolution three three eight one passed. Thank you. Uh, we addressed item H, so we, that is the end of our regular agenda, so we'll move to item I, which is, uh, discussion of the ten agenda for April twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three. Uh, under old business, we will have, um, ordinance number eleven eighty-four, an ordinance of the city council of the city of East Ridge, Tennessee, to amend the zoning regulation, the zoning map of the city of East Ridge, Tennessee, so as to rezone the property located at fifteen oh five Crater Road, tax map one six nine K, N dash zero zero five dot zero one from C two commercial district to R one residential district to R Z one lot, zero lot line residential district. This will be the second final reading. Do we have any discussion on that? See none. Under new business, we have one item, this ordinance number eleven eighty-five, budget amendment, it will be the first reading.
Yes, it'll be showing where y'all have approved the purchase for prepayments on the, um, fire truck and the garbage truck.
Thank you, ma'am. Any questions, council? Uh, is there any other business? Need a. I see none. All right. Thank you, council, thank you everyone for attending and have a great evening and just maybe miss a journey.